I'm sure. I'm at a loss. I don't know where they are.
Yes, ma'am. Do you know the name of the young man that was involved in this shooting? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's Highland Park City Council meeting in person and virtual regular meeting for scheduled for Monday, March 18th at 7:00 P. M. As far as opening ceremony today, I just wanted to take a moment and we'll have a moment of silence for Mr. Courtney Cooper. You guys are not familiar. Mr. Cooper lost his life recently in the shooting in the city. He's a young man who unfortunately lost his life. He was a staple in the community, very well loved and very well known. And if you would mind, if you would just bow your head in silence to recognize our loss, you would. Thank you very much for that. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll for tonight's meeting?
Councilman Ashapi.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Brother.
House President Thomas.
Here. Thank you very much. Moving on to item three, that's the approval of the agenda member to city council. You've had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda. And at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda and proceed forward in the meeting.
Motion to approve with amendments.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with amendments for Mr. Ashapi. Mr. Ashapi, would you please state those amendments?
Yes, uh, um, in council affairs, I would like to move the appointment of candidate to fill treasury vacancy. I want to move it from council affairs uh, to uh, to uh, city, city council five. I, I would, I would like to make that five A. And then the resolution to approve the primary or special election can be five B.
Okay, Mr. Ashapi, to your point, I asked the clerk to put this under council affairs so far since we've been city council members. This is the first item on the agenda that was initiated by city council. The motion to proceed in this direction was started by yourself. It was seconded by pro temp. Everything that has occurred related to the appointment of the candidate to fill the treasurer has been under council affairs and not under administrations affairs. So putting it under council affairs, in my opinion, is where it belongs. This is not a part of the administration's program. The decision to move forward with this has nothing to do with the administration. Everything on the agenda right now prior to that pertains to city business, things that we must do as our obligations. But council affairs is where we dispose of things of our choosing. And this is the first item since we became council people where this item, the entire history and trajectory of it falls under council affairs. And that's the reason why I put it there.
I understand that, Councilman, uh, 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 Council President, I get that, but you know, five does say city council. And, and this, uh, this particular resolution for the primary is council affair and council affair alone. So I, I really don't see the conflict with moving that there. I mean, they're both actually intertwined with one another. I, I really don't see the conflict.
Okay, so item A, I, so we have, we moved it to item five. Here should be item B. Our first obligation is a resolution to approve the primary and special election per the charter. So if you want to move it to five B, I'll support it.
Okay. All right. I'll take five B. I'll do that.
Do we have any other?
Yeah, I got, I got one more, sir. Um, the GLEWA. Where are we putting this?
I want that one.
Oh, okay, okay, perfect. Perfect. Go right here in this court.
Yes, I have the resolution to approve settlement agreement between water and sewer services agreement trust agreement lockbox agreement. Call council, pass the resolution for the city to approve the waiver for Miller Campfield to redraft the trust. And that has been done. And now this document, settlement, it's ready to be approved. And I want to watch that on first items.
Yeah. Okay, I, it will be my suggestion to put that at item five so that we can get that taken care of and move on. Mr. Ashapi, would you have any argument with putting that as item five?
I have no argument putting that inside of five. Uh, we can move, uh, we can actually deal with this one here. It's the most important thing on the agenda tonight. So we actually put this at five. Uh, put the, uh, put the, uh, the election at five A and put, um, um, uh, the treasurer at five B. I'm gonna mean about that.
Chair, for support. We have any questions, any dissent? Madam Clerk, would you call to roll for the approval of the agenda item three? We have a motion, sorry. We have a motion on the floor made by Councilman Ashapi. Supported by the chair to remove, to move the appointment of the candidate to fill the treasurer vacancy up to city council affairs as item B. The first item is a resolution to approve a primary special election. And the first item will be the, uh, GLEWA contract. Yes, it's Manica.
He's not walking at all. He's sat in the square for now.
Yes, ma'am.
He's only be doing the switch of five B and, and five A.
Yes, ma'am. And, and so she.
Council President, can we do the agenda as follow? Five should be city administrator with the resolution to approve settlement agreement. And then we would move six to be city council, six A and B, and seven, eight, nine, and 10.
I'm in agreement.
I am in agreement.
Hearing no protest, Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll the approval of the agenda item three?
Councilman Ashapi.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Manica.
Yes.
Councilproton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item four, this is the approval of the workshop meeting minutes for March 4th, 2024. City Council, what's your pleasure? On item four, first meetings.
I move to approve the workshop minutes, meeting minutes, March 4th, 2024.
Have a motion on the floor, uh, second, have a motion on the floor from Councilman Manica to approve the workshop meeting minutes for March 4th, 2024. There is no dissent. Would you please call to roll on item four, the first amendments for approval, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ashapi.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Manica.
Yes.
Councilproton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Next under item four, the approval of the regular meeting minutes for March 4th, 2024. City Council, what is your pleasure on this item?
I move to approve the regular minutes, regular meeting minutes, March 4th, 2024.
Off for a second. Any questions, concerns, dissent? Perk, would you please call to roll on approval of the regular meeting minutes for March 4th?
Councilmember Ashapi.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Manica.
Yes.
Councilproton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Thank you. Motion carries. Last is the approval of the special meeting minutes for March 11th, 2024. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve the special meeting minutes, March 11th, 2024.
Chair, off for a second. Madam Clerk, would you call to roll on that, please?
Councilmember Ashapi.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Manica.
Yes.
Councilproton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Uh, we move to the section of our agenda. Every council meeting where we are, we turn the flow over to Mayor McDonald so that she may address council and the public. Mayor McDonald, if you would.
Good evening, everyone. I only have a few things. I promise I, I keep. I want to thank everyone who worked on the water deal. I hope that we are ready to move forward and put this 20-year-old deal behind us so that we can continue on with the next process. State of the city address will be held on Thursday, March 21st at Revival Tavernacle, 16455 Woodward Avenue at 6:00 P. M. That's at Revival Tavernacle Church, 16455 Woodward Avenue at 6:00 P. M. Uh, we're still working, moving city board. I hope you guys will feel working with me and so we can move for make progress. City is, we had a lot going on last year. We've got a lot done. I want to continue the process. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. This is the point of the meeting where we open the floor for citizens' participation on items pertaining to the agenda. And if there are members of the audience, members of the community or guests who would like to address councils specifically on items on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. Our agenda is as following, Great Lakes Water Authority contract, city council affairs, a primary election, and the appointment of a chair of the temporary treasurer. The funded administration, the resolution to issue RFP for ambulance transportation at a community development, we have a resolution to sell two vacant lots. Under finance, the submission of our monthly financial statement and Department of Engineering, this is the resolution authorizing authorizing the submission of a federal aid funding grant to Wayne County. If there are people who wanted to speak on those items, this is your opportunity to do so. If you'd like to speak, you approach the podium. If you're a guest, we'll ask you to state your name. I will allot you two minutes. At the end of the two minutes, if you will be kind enough to relinquish the microphone. And sir, you can go ahead now.
James Luca, 24 Massachusetts. I have a question on the community development. When, when to sell the vacant lots and, and we do this probably every month and things like that, are those documents open to the public where we can see those documents that are submitted to the city, how they're completed? So they available for public viewing?
So this is, this is your first time. So this is where the question you can ask, and then we can get back to you at the end of that in council affairs.
Sure.
I can't make any assumptions. These are private documents.
Yes.
People's home addresses.
Understood.
Information that would require disclosure on their part.
Yes.
Can't answer that question. I'll try to answer it before the meeting is open.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Do you have anyone else? Good evening, sir.
How are you doing, Council President?
Very good.
My name is Marcus Fitzgerald. Um, I'm an ex-resident of Highland Park, but I do have my daughter and grandchildren here. Um, I was noticing on Davidson East Service Drive right before you get to Oakland. There isn't a yield sign there for the traffic that comes off of the freeway. You know, I'm sorry, for the people going down the service drive. But it's for the people when they come off the freeway, they aren't hit by someone going down the service drive. And now I understand that that might be a county road. I just wanted to know how to proceed any further to take care of that or ask someone to take care of it.
Can I have your name again, sir?
Marcus Fitzgerald.
Fitzgerald, okay. We have our, uh, DPW supervisor here today, Mr. Fitzgerald. He might be able to offer you. He might have a conversation for you after the meeting. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I can't help it. When I talk to my elders, I just, I can't help it. Good evening, ma'am.
Uh, I was wondering about this property at 400 Island. Uh, do you have any idea what they want to do with their property? Because it's right behind me. I need to know. And this company, what is, what is this company? They own one property and now they abandoned the property next to it. So they don't plan to do anything with it, but pencil it in. Uh-huh. And then what do they plan to do to develop this property? Okay, that's what I wanted to know because it's right behind me. I want to know what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. I don't see anybody else moving to the podium, so that will allow us to move into our agenda. Don't see anybody else moving. Okay, so we're moving to item five, and this is the GLWA contract. This is an item that was walked on by our city business administrator. I guess I'll be turning the floor over to you, Ms. Ware. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. So we have item five, which is the signing of the GLWA contract. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashapi.
With discussion, I'm sorry. Motion to approve with discussions.
Do we have support?
Support.
Supported by Councilproton Robinson. Mr. Ashapi, you had discussion?
Yes, yes, um. Uh, Ms. Ware? I understand that you're gonna, gonna.
I don't like to turn my back to the audience.
Yeah, you're gonna walk us through this real quick?
I'm gonna read the rest.
Okay. Okay.
Because the only thing that's different is the trust agreement.
Got you.
I hate, I hate standing here like this. I like to look at the audience. My library of documents. Okay. Yeah, it's more like you're in church. Good evening, everyone. It's a good night tonight. And I would like to thank Councilman Ashapi. He took the place of Councilwoman Robinson, who demanded to be in a mediation. And she had a conflict, so Councilman Ashapi stepped up in her place. And for the last two nights, Thursday night and Friday night, for how many hours? 17 hours?
Yes.
17 hours, we hammered it out. We also have Ron Lipscomb tonight. If you recall, he was here last, at the last council meeting because the state hired him to come in and close the deal. Uh, he redid the trust agreement, and I will let him go through the changes to that agreement. It went from a very long 35-plus page agreement to a 15-page agreement that complies with our charter, our ordinances and state law. So that's wonderful. So for the most part, uh, the, the, the deal is done. It's more than just a contract with GLEWA. It is a settlement agreement. And this settlement agreement, uh, includes a updated administrative consent agreement with the state of Michigan. We were in an old one, uh, that the city entered into after the, the helm fire. And that was, there were a lot of requirements for us to fix all kinds of things, and we did. And we've entered into a new one now that will comport with all of the meter installation and all the things that are going to happen from here on. So I'm going to tell everybody that all of your groups and the water advocates and stay advocating. Because now we move to the next phase of this, which means to get the meters in the ground so that we can ultimately get our water and sewer system metered, so we aren't just un-metered. I'm going to read the resolution to you so that you understand what we've done. And, um, and then Ron can come up to briefly talk about the trust. And then that's it. Now, there is a, because there's always a hangup. And, uh, GLEWA has decided to audit last year. They have previously audit, under the old 96 agreement, there was an audit provision where they would come in and, and look at all the books to make sure we hadn't cheated them out of our, out of the 65% that we were supposed to pay them. And, um, and so apparently the GLEWA board is meeting on Thursday because they have to approve the trust. The portions of the agreement that they approved are the same portions of the agreement we approved. So they will be meeting on, um, uh, Thursday, and we have agreed to reduce the audit time from a 15-day notice period to a two-day notice period. So that's going on, and, and, uh, we're confident that that will turn out. Uh, because tonight we're settling. So, um, you know, if, if they dig up another $5 million, I'm just letting them right right now know we ain't got it. So the settlement will have to be the settlement that the state is providing, because when you settle something, that means you've settled it. That doesn't mean that you settle it and you can go dig up some more money that you all, that you think somebody owes you from somewhere else. So this says, City of Highland Park, a resolution to approve settlement agreement, water and sewage services agreement, trust agreement, and lockbox agreement. Whereas the city has been engaged in long-term litigation, the litigation with the Great Lakes Water Authority related to the provision of wholesale water supply and sewage disposal services by GLEWA to the city and the related payment for such services. And whereas the city has been represented by Grigsby and Associates, Inc. of Danville, California, and Morgan Roth and Morgan Roth, P L L C, Birmingham, Michigan, together litigation counsel during the course of the litigation. And whereas the state of Michigan, the state has been assisting the city in GLEWA to resolve the litigation in the best interest of each of the parties. And whereas the city and GLEWA have resolved the litigation, the litigation pursuant to the terms of that certain settlement agreement and mutual risk mutual release, including all exhibits and attachments thereto the settlement agreement being entered into by and between the city, GLEWA, and the state. And whereas the terms of the settlement agreement require the city to provide for the intercept and distribution by a trustee pursuant to a trust agreement, including all exhibits and attachments thereto the trust agreement, and together with the settlement agreement, the settlement documents and the revenue, system revenues derived from services provided by the city's water supply and sewage disposal system. The system and whereas this city council previously approved the settlement agreement subject to the redrafting of the trust agreement. And whereas since the previous council approval, the trust agreement has since been redrafted and is in form and substance compliant with the city charter and state and federal law. And whereas certain limited provisions of the settlement agreement have been slightly modified to reflect changes arising from the new trust agreement, including the water supply services agreement and wastewater disposal service agreement, together the water and sewage services agreement included as exhibits to the settlement agreement. And whereas included in the package with this resolution are redlined copies reflecting the changes made to the settlement agreement and the water and sewage services agreement. And whereas the city previously entered into administrative consent order number ACO dash 399 dash 06 dash 2017 dated July 28th, 2017, the ACO, which required the city to make certain modifications to its water work system, which improvements were necessary in order for the city to meet its obligations under relevant federal and state law. And whereas the ACO needs to be updated in order to reflect the terms of the settlement. And the city and the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy have negotiated a new administrative compliance agreement, the ACA, to replace the ACO. And whereas the parties enter into the settlement agreement in good faith and to fully and finally compromise and settle all claims. and to fully and finally compromise and settle all claims or potential claims which they may have against one another arising from the litigation, whether or not specifically raised through the litigation, and whereas litigation council each approves the terms of the settlement documents and recommend that the city council approve the settlement documents and authorize and direct the mayor, the city clerk and the city treasurer, or any person acting in the role of an interim or deputy city treasurer, the treasurer, and any other officers, employees, attorneys and agents to execute such settlement documents. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, approval of settlement agreement. The city council hereby ratifies and confirms its approval of the settlement agreement as presented herein, including exhibits and attachments thereto, all as attached heretofore as, as exhibit A, and hereby authorizes and directs the mayor and the city clerk to execute such documents. Two, approval of water supply services agreement. The city council hereby ratifies and confirms its approval of the water supply services agreement as presented herein, attached as exhibit D to the settlement agreement, and hereby authorize and directs the mayor and the city clerk to execute such document. Three, approval of wastewater services agreement. The city council hereby ratifies and confirms its approval of the wastewater services agreement as presented herein, attached as exhibit D to the settlement agreement, and hereby authorizes and directs the mayor and the city clerk to execute such document. Four, approval of administrative compliance agreement. The city council hereby ratifies and confirms its approval of the administrative compliance agreement as presented herein, attached as exhibit B to the settlement agreement, and hereby authorizes and directs the mayor and the city clerk to execute such document. Five, approval of the trust agreement. The city council hereby approves the trust agreement attached as exhibit E to the settlement agreement, including all exhibits and attachments thereto, including without limitation, the deposit account control agreement, and hereby authorizes and directs the mayor, the city clerk and the treasurer to execute such documents with such additional changes as may, may be, A, required by either U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association as trustee under the trust agreement, or Comerica Bank as depository for the receiving fund as defined in the trust agreement, and B, approved by litigation council. Six, approval of lockbox agreement. The city council hereby approves the lockbox agreement with Comerica to provide for the restriction on withdrawals from the receiving fund, attached heretofore as exhibit B, and hereby authorizes and directs the mayor, the city clerk and or treasurer to execute such document with such additional changes as may be, A, required by either U.S. Bank Trust Company, National Association as trustee under the trust agreement, or Comerica Bank as depository for the receiving fund as defined in the trust agreement, and B, approved by litigation council. Seven, rescissions. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution B and the same hereby are rescinded. E, immediate effect. The resolution, the resolution is given e- immediate effect. So that, that's the resolution, and, uh, I'll have Ron come up to talk about the redlined versions in the document, because there were some, there was reference to the trust agreement in other documents other than the trust itself.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, my name is Ron Lipscomb, I'm a, an attorney at Miller Canfield. Council President, members of council, it's a pleasure to appear in front of you tonight. So as Kathy indicated in the reading of the resolution, essentially, what we've done is redrafted the trust agreement that was presented officially as a form, uh, drafted by Great, the Great Lakes Water Authority. We redrafted it to comply with the provisions of the, uh, of the city charter and state and federal law. Um, the trust agreement, some of the essential elements of the trust agreement, as previously drafted, carried over into this, uh, just because they were required elements of the settlement. Um, but all the other pieces that were more objectionable have been removed. So essentially, you were provided a summary of material terms of the trust agreement, it's just a one-page summary. Um, I'll run through some of those highlights, and then I'll pause and ask if any of you have any questions. So the trust agreement is being entered into by and between the city and the trustee, which is very customary for a trust agreement. You have kind of the grantor of the trust, and then the trustee. Um, in this case, beneficiaries are, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority and the state of Michigan as the holder of nineteen ninety-nine revenue bonds of the city that were issued to make improvements to the water and sewer system. And then, obviously, the city itself, uh, to the extent that, uh, you will be receiving money to operate the local system, okay? There are two different funds that are referenced in the trust agreement. The first is the city's receiving fund, which is commonly known as the Wade Trim account. And this fund is the fund into which all of the utility system revenues are deposited. So what we're doing is setting up a sweep from the receiving fund to the trust account that occurs twice a week. Um, in connection with that, we are entering into a deposit account control agreement, which restricts the, um, uh, the withdrawal of money to just that specified in the agreement, the, the deposit account control agreement, which is the twice weekly sweeps to the trustee. Um, and in addition to that, you're gonna be setting up what's called lockbox services. Um, and basically what that does is Comerica Bank sets up a P O box, and all of the mailed in payments from your customers are mailed directly to this P O box, okay? The other part to it, I believe as it stands now, for people who make, uh, online payments, that is automatically deposited directly into the receiving fund, that will stay the same. And in addition to that, um, for any payments made in purpose, in person at the service center, uh, will be deposited weekly by city staff, the treasurer, into the receiving fund, um, and then deposited, and then transferred twice weekly to the trust account. The trust fund is being established, again, with U.S. Bank, which is, administers one of the revenue sharing trusts that the city has entered into with respect to other, as a state revolving fund debt. Um, and basically, what, what's gonna happen is there's gonna be one time, so there will be two times, uh, weekly deposits into the trust fund, and once monthly withdrawals, dispersments from the trust fund that are going to go to GLEWA, um, to the city to operate the system, those are operations and maintenance expenses. And then third, to the state to pay the debt service on the nineteen ninety-nine bonds. The trust agreement also requires that, uh, a few reports be generated and provided monthly, so, um, you are, uh, basically gonna allow the state and GLEWA to, you know, get, uh, savings from the receiving fund every month. Um, and there's also an obligation that arises under the administrative compliance agreement that requires, um, an annual rate study. So every three years, there will be a more kind of full-blown rate study. Um, and then every two years in the interim will be a pared down rate study, but part of that will be a cash flow forecast, which really just is going to lay out your monthly inflows and outflows to help you identify in advance any potential deficiencies, um, that may arise on a monthly basis in the water fund. So it's really a very useful budgeting tool, um, and your, uh, rate consultant will be performing that as part of the annual rate study. That's it, there are references, there were two, well, there are two references that were changed in each of the settlement agreement and in the water agreement and the sewer agreement, and those changes were strictly to change the definition of settlement agreement and trust agreement. And that's it, other than that, it's the exact same document that you saw two weeks ago. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
City Council, the floor is open for questions, though, for those who haven't.
Can you go a little bit in depth with the lock?
Yeah, so this is a standard, well, when we set up trust agreements, oftentimes for different credits, um, we oftentimes will set up this lockbox, and really, all it is, is a P O box. Comerica sets up, so all of your, um, all of the payments, customer payments that are mailed in will go to a Comerica P O box. Every day, what they do is they take out the, all the checks, scan them in, and do a data dump, so that you're able to track which customers made which payments. So you can track it back to their accounts and give them credit for that, um, and that's really it. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a complex, I won't say it's a complex, it's a long document, but that's essentially what it does. Yeah.
So is that like an online lockbox, or is it?
P O box.
P O box.
Yep. Yep.
Responsible for getting that, is it going straight to, who pays that up?
Comerica picks it up. Comerica actually has an arrangement with, um, uh, with the U.S. Postal Service. So they go multiple times a day and pick up, uh, all the checks that were mailed in to the lockbox.
It's almost like, you know, uh, for people who have credit cards, like if you have a Sears card, you don't pay Sears. You pay Synchronicity Bank or whoever they're having you mail the payment to. So the way it is now, the payments are mailed to the city. So this now restricts that, so the, the payments now, and one of the things that we'll have to put in the, uh, in the, in the, in the, in the bill, is the new location to mail in a payment. So it's just, this is P O box at the bank now, instead of coming here. We'll still handle the cash, we'll still have, because a lot of people here pay by cash, they go up to the service center and they pay by cash. That will still be taken to the bank by the treasurer, and, uh, but checks that come in, mostly the businesses pay by check. They'll just go to a P O box at the bank.
Additional questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve the new contract made by Councilman Al Shafi, supported by Councilwoman Robinson, thank you very much, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk, to call to roll, one out of five. Thank you, Ms. Square.
Councilmember Shafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item six, City Council, we have a resolution to approve the primary and special election to replace the city treasurer as required by the city charter, City Council, what is your pleasure on item six A?
Motion to approve with questions?
We have a motion to approve item six A made by Councilman Al Shafi, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Robinson, Mr. Al Shafi, your questions?
Uh, to the clerk, uh, what day are we looking for, for this particular, um, election?
It will be held in conjunction with the August primary that's coming up.
Okay.
And then there will be a general in November.
Okay.
We'll be piggybacking off of the state and county election.
Okay, on both of those?
Correct.
Okay, okay, um.
With the approval of the resolution that has to be sent to the county asking permission to do so.
Okay.
Additional questions? Council Pro Tim?
So if we're having a primary, why do we have to have a special election? And how much, who stands for a special election?
It's called a special because it's not a scheduled election. And that's the reason why we want to ask the county if we can piggyback off the state in, in federal elections, so we won't have to put out any additional costs. If we have the special election by ourselves, without another piggybacking on another election, we would be responsible for funding the entire election.
And, uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shafi?
Uh, if we are forced to fund, uh, the daddy election, what would be your price tag of that, Madam Clerk?
Prices had risen like everything else, about twenty to twenty-five thousand. Or more, because now, you know, we have, um, additional cost factors. It used to be twenty, but the price increase is twenty-five to thirty thousand for an election.
Okay.
And so can you repeat what date you said this would, this special election would be?
Yeah, yeah. The August what and November what?
First Tuesday of August and the first Tuesday of November.
Okay, look at my calendar there. First Tuesday of August. This is gonna be July. Okay, the first, first Tuesday of August.
August the sixth, for the primary.
Okay.
And November fifth.
Okay.
For the general.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, the, the dates are actually listed on the resolution.
Was it John Clark sitting over there?
Yes, sir.
Hey, John, how you doing?
Fine, sir, thank you.
All right. Okay.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Clerk.
And I just want to let the public know, if anyone is interested in filing petitions, filing, the deadline is April twenty-third at four o'clock, so the timeline is very, very close.
Is it April twenty-third at five o'clock?
Four.
At four o'clock?
Deadline to file, huh?
Additional questions or comments before we call for a roll? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll for item six A? This is a resolution to approve a primary special election.
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item six. B, this is the appointment of temporary treasurer. Ms. Manica? This is the, this was the resolution that was placed on our desk.
The name of treasurer just said.
Approval for the resolution for the appointment, correct. To your point, so this is a resolution just for the appointment, are you right there on that?
There's not no one.
There's no name in there, okay, uh, City Council, what's your pleasure on item six B?
Motion to approve with questions.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi to approve the resolution to appoint the city treasurer and approve bond amount. Um, do you have support?
I support.
Supported by Council Pro Tim Robinson, Mr. Shafi, you have questions?
Yeah, um, Council President, um, I'm, I'm concerned about the timeline in which we sit here, you know, to, uh, uh, today is not only supposed to be the day to approve the appointment of the treasurer, but to also pick an appointee. Okay, this is the deadline for that, that is all supposed to happen today, now, I, I, I want to remind my council members what's at stake here, so the treasurer, Ms. Bibbs, was removed from office. Her last day was the twenty-second of last month. The court order and the charter clearly states we must appoint somebody thirty days after the vacancy occurs. That's the court order, and it's also the rule in the charter, we must appoint somebody thirty days after the vacancy occurs. If we don't make this happen today, then we run into a problem on the twenty-second of this month, when the deadline runs out, which is going to be, uh, Wednesday, I believe. That will be the twenty-second of this month, that would be thirty days. So my concern is, I understand that, uh, that, you know, there is some, uh, some hesitation here, but I am strongly going to insist that we, we keep to the timeline that we voted on, that we agreed to, and that we not deviate from. Everything else has been followed, we need to follow this last step all the way through, and I'll only approve the appointment, but pick an appointee at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Al Shafi, the reason that this was placed under Council Affairs was to do exactly that, to approve this resolution, and then at that point, a member of City Council, any member, could make a motion to appoint a person. could make a motion to appoint a person. That's the reason why it was put under Council Affairs for, both can happen today. That motion for picking a person, that was supposed to happen if this was held under Council Affairs, we'll have to do it some other way. But that's the reason why I was in Council Affairs for the approval of the resolution. And so that the floor could be open during Council Affairs for any member to make a motion to approve said individual.
Okay, okay. I think that both can be done at the same time here, sir.
It's not on, it's not on the agenda. We have to finish the agenda and then we can make, we can have, just make a general motion during Council Affairs. If you refer to Roberts Rule, Council Affairs is where those motions initiated by council can be made.
That's not what we voted on, Council President.
So, Mr. O'Shafi, I'm only talking about the procedure, the way that the meeting goes. What you're asking for can happen. It can happen tonight. The place for that to occur is once we finish the agenda for the city. Our, our role here in the first part of this meeting is to handle city business. And then Council Affairs belongs to City Council. It can't happen today per your comment, per your insistence. It can't exact, it can happen tonight. We just can't throw it on the agenda. It has to happen in a place in the meeting that is set aside specifically for council business.
Okay, so, okay, so, Council President?
Yes, sir.
So help me understand this one here.
Yes.
Okay, we changed the agenda.
You changed the agenda, sir.
Okay, and we voted on it and it got approved, so that's us. Okay, you can attempt to dissect yourself if you want to, I understand.
I agree to change the agenda per your request. I agree.
Exactly. It was voted on, it was approved, okay? The two are, are together now, so are you suggesting that we re-separate these two items?
No, sir. I'm saying that we vote on this item, six B. And then if you would like to make a motion to appoint someone, that you do so during Council Affairs. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. You can make a motion for something during Council Affairs if you chose.
That sounds weird to me. Why does that sound so weird? That makes no sense. I'm going to approve, I'm going to approve this resolution. There's a space here blank for who we're going to appoint. We're not going to say who we're going to appoint, so we're going to say it later on in Council Affairs. I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, I'm with you here. So after talking to the attorney, why don't you just restructure your motion to approve this with the person that you would like to have in there, Ms. Manica?
Okay, okay, so I would like.
Hold on one second, sir, before you do that, Ms. Manica raised her hand during the dialogue. Ms. Manica?
This question is for the attorney. If we do not have a qualified person, or we don't have a person to actually appoint us, what would be the penalty? Can we get an extension on those thirty days? Is it actually the twenty seconds? What, what would actually happen if, if we tabled this, what would actually happen?
Well, any appointment, first of all, good evening, everybody. The appointment would be subject to, first of all, the person securing a bond, most importantly, which council has to set this evening. And also subject to a background check. So even if council does appoint this evening, that would be subject to that person quote unquote being qualified through a bond and a background check. And that wouldn't happen, obviously, this evening. It would have to happen in the next day or so, depending on the circumstances.
Does that answer your question?
So wouldn't that come along things if we appoint somebody later? Then they would have to get bonded. Wouldn't that exceed our thirty days?
Yeah, potentially, sure. Yeah, if you waited a week or, sure. I mean, I'm not sure of the bonding process. I've never been through the process. I, I have to imagine it takes a few days to go through that paperwork and things of that nature. And also, I'm not aware as to the amount of the bond that's required. Ms. Square, do we know?
Excuse me, Ms. Ms. Square, what is a typical bond amount for someone in that row? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so my next question is, what would be the benefit of dealing that?
Are you looking at me?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not here to call balls and strikes. I'm simply answering the question, which is whether, whether that would take some time to do, and it would.
I do know, I do know something about, I've learned this recently. The former treasurer had a bond. It was a bonding company that did business with the city. So there's probably a file in the office. And she got an initial bond and every year there was a renewal and the city paid for that. So that's, that's something that is, you know, some, I, I have not gone down and looked at the files, but I understand that she did, you have to apply for the bond. And, uh, and then, you know, if you get it, then you have to, uh, renew it every year. There is also a binding requirement with Wayne County. And it's probably based on the receipts. Basically, you know, hey, you know, not saying that any treasurer would run off and steal the city's money, but it's probably based on the receipts of the tax collection. So it's a whole process, but there is a bond company that the former treasurer, you know, and then, and then that's important because our liability insurance won't cover the person until they get the bond.
So that's a whole process?
It's a process.
So what would be the benefit of us wait?
I mean, you'd have to wait anyway. I don't know what the penalty is if you don't wait, do it in the thirty days, but if you were to point them tonight, they would, you know, they go sit in the chair. They wouldn't be able to touch any money or do anything until they get their bond. So I don't think, I think that's just a technicality. Just like when you're elected, you have to get sworn in. That's a process. You don't get sworn in the same day that you're elected.
If I could just add one point, Ms. Square, uh, in terms of the amount of the bond, I guess to piggyback what she said, council could simply indicate that it would be the same dollar amount that the outgoing treasurer had. It's the same amount. That way then it, you know, obviously there, there must be a file and, and whoever is, are, are, uh, providing the bond could inform us as to the amount of the bond that's required, both through, through the city and also through the county. Thank you.
Mr. O'Shafi?
Okay, so I like the, the record to show that the bond is a two million dollar bond. It can be issued inside of twenty-four hours. We do have the records for that, for Ms. Jenice Beers and the bonding to see that she went through. It wouldn't be a long drawn out process. This could be done in forty-eight hours. And it's just like Ms. Kathy Square said, until she has the bond, she can sit in the seat, but she really can't do anything until she has the bond, okay? So it's not a holdup, it's not an issue. We went through a process. That process was followed by Highland Park residents. Uh, uh, out of all of the people who applied for this position, only two people applied and then one person poured out at the last minute, and that was Ms. Marsha Conde, because she told me that herself out of the hallway. There's only one candidate here who went through the process, who followed the process that was voted on by this council, and that is the individual who showed up for the interview, who jumped through every hoop that needed to be jumped through. She's clearly qualified and I feel that her appointment is, 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 is mandatory by her being a Highland Park resident. And she should be appointed with no delay, with no hiccups, let the process go through. We all voted on it, we all agreed on it. There's no reason to attempt to try to stall or double back now.
We, we voted on the process. We didn't vote on a candidate.
I didn't say we voted on it. I said we voted on the process. There's no reason to stall it out now.
So let's go forward, ladies and gentlemen.
So, so I would like to, uh, uh, amend my, uh, uh, my motion. I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution for appointment city treasurer and approval of bond. And, and, and my appointment, the person I picked to appoint is Ms. Lisa Stalarsky, who went through every hoop possible to make it happen. She's qualified, she, she, she's done the work, she deserves the position.
Ms. Manica? Wait a minute, hold on. Do we have support?
I support.
Okay, Ms. Manica, floor is yours.
I think it should be separate, because one, you're appointing somebody and you're saying we appoint.
We're not.
But I think the process should be, we approve this part first, to have a temporary resolution to appoint a city treasurer and approve bond. I'm not sure why it's, okay, but to do this first. And then you can make your motion for whoever you want to appoint, but to try to add and include the two million, all of that, just, just approve this and come back and give your motion.
I've already made the motion. I've made, Ms. Manica, I will not be changing. It's been supported, it's on the floor.
So before we call?
If I could wait, yeah, I mean, I mean, the motion was proper, so he, he's made a motion to fill the vacancy on a temporary basis with the bond amount of two million dollars. Um, and so that, that's a motion, it's been, been properly seconded, and so it's still discussion, but at some point then council would have to vote on that motion.
Uh, thank, thank you, John. And I'm, and I'm all for voting on that motion, but to Ms. Manica's point, we agreed on the process. All five of us here agreed that this process needed to happen. This is, this was all initiated by Councilman O'Shafi and Councilpro Tim Robinson. We did agree to start this process. But none of us said we were going to pick a individual. We received nine applications. Seven of those people were not city residents, so that meant those seven people, if they were appointed, would not be able to hold the position lawfully. They couldn't hold the position lawfully because they didn't live here in Purdy Charter. To be the treasurer long term, it requires the approval of the public. It requires a referendum of the people saying, this is who we choose. Has nothing to do with their qualifications or their background. This is what the community would choose. They could choose anyone they wanted. As the five of us could as well. So we did agree on a process. We did not agree on an individual. The fact that these two are being brought together, that's not exactly the way that this process started out. Again, this is a process started, all the motions were made by Mr. O'Shafi. All of them were seconded by Councilpro Tim Robinson. The rest of us were voting participants. We didn't initiate this. Is there any further discussion before I call to roll on this item?
There is.
Yes, ma'am, please.
My further discussion is still disperated because there are two different things.
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
There are two different things. And if I recall, there, there might have been some discrepancy. So if the lawyer would speak to that. If there's any discrepancy or either we separate it, and I can have my discussion or debate about whether or not to separate it. Or I didn't say you couldn't make the motion. I'm just saying, let's not put those together because it's causing an issue to put those together. I can answer.
Yes, ma'am, I, I, I agree with you, but what I have to do is, there is a motion on the floor. There is support for it. And we have to vote our conscience.
No, I mean, yeah, you have to vote your conscience, but I can say my piece that he may even decide, maybe, maybe not, to change his motion, which we've done that before, and driven up to support and created a new motion. So either way, that's still staying true.
You're correct, ma'am. Madam Pro Tim?
Attorney. This says a resolution to appoint, appoint city treasurer and approve bond. So we are doing exactly what the resolution said.
That's correct.
Can we call for the vote?
Thank you.
I asked the lawyer something.
Any additional questions?
Was there any additional things we should consider on this before we appoint anybody?
No. Okay, okay. The motion is on the floor. There are clearly dissenting voices, myself among them, but we're going to vote on this motion because it was made proper and the resolution is in hand. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll on item six B? This is the resolution to appoint the city treasurer and approve bond.
Councilmember O'Shafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin? You said appointing treasurer and approve bond?
Yes.
And appoint Lisa Stalarsky, right?
That's the same thing.
And, 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 and that was the motion. Ms. Ms. Manica, I'm, I'm with you, but that was the motion. And appoint?
Lisa Stalarsky, right? That was the add-in, right?
Lisa Stalarsky.
Just so I'm clear, that's the add-in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It's really not an add-in.
No, sir, we're voting, we're voting, we're voting, we're voting. Ms. Martin, would you call to roll?
I get it.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes.
Councilmember Manica?
No.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
No, motion carries. Under item seven of the administration, we're moving on item seven, resolution to issue RFP for ambulance transportation services. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve on the floor for item seven from Councilman O'Shafi, do you have support?
Support.
Support from Councilpro Tim Robinson. Questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Clerk, would you call to roll on item seven, please?
Councilmember O'Shafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to community development, item eight. Item eight A is a resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at two oh nine McLean to Juan Walker Jr., the adjacent property owner at two eleven McLean. City Council, what's your pleasure? Give me an opportunity to pull this up.
I made a resolution to sell the vacant lot, residential adjacent lot at two oh nine McLean to Juan Walker Jr., the adjacent property owner of two eleven.
Ma'am, you made a, making a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman O'Shafi to approve the sale of the vacant lot at two oh nine McLean. Questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Clerk, would you call to roll on item eight A?
Councilmember O'Shafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item eight B, under community development, resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at four hundred Highland to Bees R E L L C, a Florida limited liability company, the adjacent property owner at three nine six Highland. City Council, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Item eight B from Councilman O'Shafi with questions. Do you have support?
All right, Council President, it's a done deal, no support, it's dead.
Chair offers support.
Okay, so my question is, is Beers LLC here? See, you know, I'm always concerned when I see an LLC as opposed to a resident. That always concerns me. You know what I'm saying? I, I, I mean, we have enough speculators in this city already. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that, that they can't get anything, but my concern is when I see LLC, I want to know what are they going to do with this particular piece of property? They're non-resident, they don't live here, they're probably in California or, 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 or New York or somewhere else, and my concern is, where is the individual who's supposed to be here to speak on this particular item and give me some assurances that this is going to be something that's just not going to sit there and grow grass for the next ten to fifteen years?
Yeah, I, I hear your concern, Mr. O'Shafi, as a, I, I own lots of property and I own some of it in LLCs and.
But you live here, sir.
I, I own property all over Southeastern Michigan.
You live here, sir.
I do, I do.
Yeah.
So most time people put their property, it's a limited liability company to protect them and their assets and their privacy. That's what people do.
His driver's license says Florida.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I withdraw, uh, my, my motion to approve.
Okay, and I would withdraw my support. Ladies and gentlemen, item eight B, under community development, the resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at four hundred Highland to Bees R E L L C, a Florida limited liability company, adjacent property owner of three nine six Highland. Item eight B dies for lack of support. Let me say this before we move on. We put ourselves in severe legal jeopardy when we start to be prejudiced against people who own property because they don't live within Highland Park. It's a very small enclave, less than three square miles.
Nobody was here to answer but me.
Yeah, yeah, hey, I, I offer support. I withdrew it. All right, so that, item eight B is there, and we'll move on to item nine under finance. We just had the gentleman here talking about the monthly submission of our financial monthly statements, so we have an opportunity to show what we want to do. Under finance, submission of the February monthly statement. City Council, what's your pleasure on this item?
I, I, I move to approve the submission of the monthly financial statement.
Yeah, receive and file.
Receive and file, February two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to receive and file the monthly financial statement. Second is offered by the Chair of City Council. Any questions or concerns? Uh, would you call to roll on item, this is item nine now?
It is.
Okay, would you please call to roll under finance, please, item nine?
Councilmember O'Shafi?
Not until they give me a full report, no.
Council, Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much. Motion failed to, again, receive our monthly financial statement. Moving on to item ten of the Department of Engineering, this is the resolution authorizing the submission of a federal aid funding, for federal aid funding from Wayne County Federal Aid Committee for fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, S T P U. This is the Surface Transportation Program for Urban for the repair of Oakland Avenue between North Davidson Service Drive and McNichols Road. City Council?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Councilman Ashafi. There's support?
Support.
Support from Council Pro Tim Robinson. Madam Kirk, would you please call to roll for item ten?
Councilmember Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Manica?
Yes.
Councilpro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. So right now, well, we've finished our agenda for today. In what will be called record time. Right now, we move to the portion of our agenda where we allow citizens' participation. Any citizen who has something to address could come to the podium for two minutes and be heard. If you would please state your name and your time will start once you state your name.
Please be careful.
Hi, my name is Jamil Edwards. I live in Highland Park on Grand, East Grand. To the honorable board, the RFP for ambulance, be mindful. The contract we had last time, we had one ambulance to service two point nine square miles. Make sure that we have more than one ambulance to service Highland Park.
Thank you, ma'am. Hold on a second, Ms. Ford. Let me reset my little doohickey here.
Good evening to honorable body to the resident of Highland Park. My name is Renee Ford and I live on, uh, West Bono Business. She brought up one point that I was gonna ask about. We have a lot of seniors here in Highland Park, and one ambulance is not sufficient to me. So I want you to be mindful when you do that contract or whatever. The next question is, and I'm kinda confused because when you be saying your motions or anybody, it's almost like you're double talking and confused the some of us. My question is, since you all approved the position, and if a conflict of interest is found to be true, will there be, will there be an investigation launched? And the reason why I say that is because I know you said something about the surety bond or something had to be certain amount. So if that person does not qualify for that amount, or they won't assure them or whatever they do for them, then we have to start the process all over. And with that being said, we had seven that did not qualify because they did not live in Highland Park. So that means we're gonna be even further behind. And I know nobody answered the question as far as is there a penalty? Or will our current young treasurer person be able to do anything as far as getting bills paid or whatever? So those are two questions. If you could answer those during council affairs, I would like to answer for those.
You have thirty seconds to spread tonight, Ms. Ford.
Hello, everybody. My name's Gracie Wooton. I'm a resident of Highland Park. I live on Eastern Street. And, um, I wanted to, uh, just remind people who haven't seen any of the posters posted, or who have not gotten an, an email from somebody, that, uh, there is a World Water Day celebration coming up this Friday. And, uh, it's gonna be at Faith, uh, Tabernacle Church. And, uh, and I, I think I got a flyer out to everyone who's sitting in this room. But, um, we have invited guests. And what we, we're, um, we're gonna be talking about the settlement. So I'm hoping that, uh, everyone who's been interested, you know, and have called us the water advocates and asked us questions will come out and listen to people who are there to talk to you about it. Also, there is, uh, important legislation, you know, that's being talked about there also. There are water affordability, uh, bills uh, that are, you know, being, uh, sponsored by our representative, uh, rep- representative, uh, Ca- Kathy Square, no. Senator Chang. And, uh, you know, uh, we really, as Highland Parkers, and this is a community with lots of low-income people, we want to have, uh, uh, these water affordabilities, uh, bills passed. That means that, uh, water, your water bill will be based on your income. So, um, and, uh, there's a percentage, uh, you know, it's staggered in terms of how much of percent. Uh, you can actually, uh, have your, uh, water bill based on your income. So, you know, this is something that we need. You know, we also, you would have protections, just like we now have in Highland Park. Whether you know it or not, we have a water affordability bill. Uh, a water for affordability plan in Highland Park, you know, but, um, ours, you know, is based on five percent of your, uh, income. But this bill that's being sponsored, you know, will be two percent. So, um, you know, you need to come and hear people talk about that water affordability bill, as well as talk about, you know, this, uh, you know, uh, settlement between, uh, Gleywa and, uh, Highland Park. Um, I did have one question. I haven't reached two minutes yet.
Yes, ma'am, you did. You reached two minutes about thirty seconds ago. I'm sorry. How you got Ms. Ford's extra thirty seconds? There you go. There you go. There you go. No, you, no, you did. You got it. It beat you a few minutes ago. No, no, you finished, but go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question about the, uh, contract or settlement. And it's, uh, you know, like, the money that's coming in uh, from the state for Highland Park, like, that's not going into that, um, that, um, what did you call it, trust? Okay.
No loans, no grants, none of the money coming from the state going into the trust. The trust is only from the bills that are paid.
Okay, okay, that's good, cuz I, you know, I would not want, you know, Gleywa to get their hands on anything that belongs to us. I mean, it's bad enough that they're getting the customer bills, right? But, um, hey, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, I got it. I got it. I definitely got it.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Price. I'm from the Highland Park School, boy. Good evening, council citizens. Warren F. S. uh, gave the stay of the county address to staff last, to staff last week, I believe. And the reason why I mentioned that is because, um, I feel like Highland Park was well represented. Um, I went with personally, I, I myself went to it, um, Councilwoman Martin and Councilwoman Robinson, and the mayor went. Um, that's all, all the elected officials from Highland Park specifically, to my acknowledgement, that went to the stay of that county address. I wanna say that specifically because I, to my acknowledgement, don't, don't stone me to death if I left out anybody. So if I, if I miss anybody, as far as elected official, I apologize, but that's the mayor, the president, Pro Tim, and Councilwoman Martin and myself, um, went to the, uh, stay of that county address, and, uh, we were, uh, Highland Park was well represented. And the, the, the county executive, uh, gave an awesome stay of that county address. And they did bid a speech on Facebook, and I think on their website as well, if you, uh, if anybody missed the stay of that county address. And, um, I, you know, uh, everybody is being active in their community, and we doing our best as far as representing Highland Park. Thank you.
Move fast. If you take longer than two minutes, I'm, I don't see the more people coming towards the podium, okay? Two minutes, ma'am.
Right. Um, hi, everybody. Um, I'm Lisa Stelarski, and I would just like to thank council, um, for, uh, believing in me so that I can fill in as treasurer, um, over the summer. Um, and, uh, um, I really just, um, that was the main thing I wanted to say, just thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
McGee?
Yes, um, good morning, council. I mean, good evening, council. I just wanted to say, um, a point came up about buying the lot that LLC had put in for. You know, I can, I could see the president's, um, point of view, and I could also see Mr. Kershie's, um, point of view also. I mean, we gotta keep in mind, we can't be so desperate for development that we end up with another north point over there, cuz that was ridiculous. And, um, and we shouldn't say we're prejudiced against LLCs. We're cautious, because if that land was good enough for them to put in the bid to buy, they should have been here too.
Right.
So we have to think about things like that. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Hey, everyone. I just wanted to bring to your attention, April sixth, Saturday, April sixth, from twelve to three, uh, the police department's gonna be hosting a community youth safety day. Um, we're gonna have safety seminars, games, prizes, food. Uh, it should just be a good time to, to bring the kids out, have fun, uh, and again, you know, trying to build, uh, build our relationship, uh, between the police department and the community. So, um, this is, uh, the beginning of hopefully several events to come in the future. So if you guys can make it, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we don't have an age limit. I mean, I mean, you're not really a kid if you're twenty-five. Oh, no, no, no. You, you kid, you know, if you're, if you're a kid or a kid at heart, come, okay?
Right on the corner, Hamilton and Waverly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move into council affairs. Mr. Ashafi, the floor is yours. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Forgive me, sir. I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at the screen. It's on the citizens' participation. Go ahead, ma'am.
Just real quick, uh, Mr. Stelarski just came up and, and said that she was gonna be serving the community until the summer, up into the summer. I wanted to know this position goes to November. And that this appointment is till November until a election is had. And, uh, the, uh, person is new person or whatever is elected. So just so she know in advance that it is for until November to the election.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I don't see any other people online. I will turn it over to city council.
You got one right here, sir.
Two minutes, sir.
Good evening, Highland Park. I'm Marcel. Um, I just wanted, cuz I was watching on YouTube. Um, first, again, um, thank you for coming to an agreement. Um, I do give you all your props. Um, but overall, um, you know, it's the dialogue between you all that, that kills me. It's kinda like mom and dad fighting at home. Um, so it's kinda like killing me at this point. Um, I did wanna bring up, um, the land purchasing. You all have, um, sold a half of a side lot last time. That was brought up. And, um, in the defense, cuz I know people, you know, I mean, I don't normally speak up for you. Um, you all are putting them in a bad position now, because the land is not assessed. A lot of these parcels don't even have the real updated information. So like, if he's trying to collect bills and things like that, I kinda understand more of the issues he's been having, because a lot of things isn't modernized. So, um, I looked it up, and, um, I agree with the sale of these properties, whatever. The main thing I'm having is that everybody go see these properties. Like, did we verify who own these LLCs? Are they up to their taxes, water bills, et cetera? Cuz that's the issue. And to protect you, Mr. Thomas, please stop telling people you're a developer. Like, as council president, you can't develop or have an active LLC, is being honest. Because I tell y'all each all the time, I'm not picking a side. I'm not in the group. I told the mayor that. I'm just trying to get stuff done and make sure the city's not getting sued, and it's not bad publicity, cuz I'm thirty. Y'all gonna pass, and I'm gonna have to step up, and I'm gonna have to fix whatever y'all done. So that's the, the main thing. I don't have to pick a side because I have youth. So my main thing is, I was at the rec center where you all had a three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar, twelve, twelve people got accepted for the three hundred thousand dollar grant to fix their homes. I know. And the issue I had, I brought it up. It was a plastic, it was a bag. They picked the names out. Let's have a better cycle, because legally, especially with it being a state program, it makes it difficult now to say it was ethical. And that was the last thing. If you can, please fill y'all commissions, because you cannot function if you don't have your commissions in place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Ashafi.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Don't leave before rebuttal. Have a seat.
Good evening, HP. Out of hell leads up from darkness into the light. Milton. This has been a long road, HP, but we made it. It looked like it almost didn't make it, but we made it. No more worries about your homes, no more worries about losing your properties, no more worries about being pushed out of this city. This council came together and made sure that this process was done, and you survive, okay? And that's the purpose of, of city government. I hear people all the time say, well, uh, you know, if we do this and we do that, the city are suffering, the city can't function. Maybe, but at least the residents will be all right. That's our job. Our job is to jump in front of that bullet, to fall on their sword. If we take a loss, fine, but no resident in Highland Park should ever take a loss. Not never. Not as long as I'm sitting here. I'll do my best to make sure you never take a loss. And I'll fight like hell to make sure that doesn't happen. So I just simply wanna say I'm in a great mood. I have nothing bad to say at all. I have the feelings. If you smoke cigars, if you're smoking and you got them, stop puffing. It's time to celebrate, ladies and gentlemen, cuz I'm definitely celebrating tonight. And you have a lovely evening, HP. I love you guys.
Much. Ms. Martin?
I see you cutting your time down.
Yeah.
I know you keep doing it. Um, I definitely wanted to say good evening, citizens. Um, I always say thank you for being out here tonight. Um, I do feel like, you know, we could cut some of these meetings a little shorter. We could probably get out of here like seven forty-five, seven thirty. If we cut out some of the, uh, I don't know what, what we gonna call it, disagreement argument, or I don't know what it is. But we could probably get out of here a little earlier. Um, on that being said, um, as of right now, I'm a little, you're excited, I'm hungry. Yeah, so I wanted to say, yeah, we did a good job. I'm very happy about this term agreement, very excited about that as well. Um, it, it, it feels like there's a weight that's been lifted off of everybody's shoulders. So I definitely wanna say thank you and to everybody that came together and even made this possible. So this is great. Gracie, I definitely want to attend that World Water Day. I didn't get a flyer or anything like that. So I'll get with you after this is, after this is over. Um, on that note, I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it over to, uh, Manica.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for being here. Uh, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who worked on getting the settlement for the water. And thank you to the lawyers for everybody working hard, traveling in, traveling out. And that we as a city and as residents also still be responsible. And even though we have a settlement, there are some responsibilities that you hold. And that is to make sure that you're aware of uh, the resources to help you pay your water bill, cuz there's still rates, okay? And also maybe even attending some of the financial counseling or workshops, um, to help you do your budgeting, to help you, uh, figure out uh, with your property taxes as well. So we still have some concerns, whether they don't have to be called worries, but we still have some concerns. So as, as residents, please make sure you stay conscious. Uh, and also, if you have issues, go to the water company and make your, uh, payment plans. That's what I'm saying. Maybe some payment plans if you need, if you need those, as well as, uh, your property taxes, et cetera, that may downtown. Ms. Gracie, if you would stay active for me, I, I have a. Ms. Gracie, if you would stay after for me, I have a question for you. And I'm sorry, I can't remember your name in the front seat next to Mr. One. Would you also stay behind for me just for a moment? Okay. My last thing, I think I heard, we cannot be desperate for any development. That goes for everything in the city. We can't be desperate just to put people in places or to establish things that we haven't clearly found out everything we need to know. So sometimes we may have to deviate from something that we normally do to get it done correctly. Other than that, look forward to the resources coming forward. The Community Assistance Day is coming forward. And definitely, please try to attend those events that's happening at the police station. They've been having some really nice things from NAMI coming, learning how to do CPR and not, not for training. So there's just been several things. So please, as citizens, please come out to the, just don't come out for the fight. Come out and get some resources and information. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Pro Tim?
Good evening, everyone. I really don't have any concerns except for one that I haven't gotten straightened out yet in this regards to two of my city of Highland Park income tax checks that bounced, and I still haven't got that straightened out yet. Hoping that I get that done. I love you. Good night.
All right, thank you. Mr. Marcel, I didn't want to ask you to state for nothing. I know you're probably trying to get out of this cold. I was a real estate developer long before I became a city council person. I'm a chemist, I'm an urban farmer. If I was a dentist, I would probably talk about dental stuff. So to state, to say that I worked for all these years to become a real estate developer and then not say it in my community, I can't, I can't imagine that would be a logical thing to do. I can't imagine being an urban farmer and not telling everybody in the neighborhood, hey, I urban farm, y'all ought to try this. So anything that I've learned over that process, absolutely, I want to share that with my community. I looked it up while I was sitting here, 330 million people in the United States of America, they say there are less than 65,000 real estate developers. That means people who own four or more pieces of property that produce monthly income. They are rare. They're super duper rare. And just like stockbrokers, somebody has to take you under their wing and teach you the business. You don't get to learn it just by trying, what people do by trying, trial and error. But you become a part of a community, and people train you up to do that work. It's not something that, I didn't go to college for this. This is something that I had to learn by losing and spending my own money. So I'm absolutely going to share whatever little information that I can glean. Most of the things related to development that I share with this, this audience, the stuff with LandGrid, the development flowchart that was provided to me, that was given to me by developers. My time spent in the city of Detroit at Capital Impact Development Training. I'm getting that knowledge. I realize it's a small room, and every chance I get, I'm going to share it with the people in my community. I didn't know what I didn't know until I got in a room full of developers who knew more than I did, and then I found myself woefully under, undereducated on the process. So I'm absolutely going to share that. We do have some real estate developers, regular dudes that live in Highland Park, that own dozens of pieces of property. They are real estate developers. It's a vocation. So my comment about LLCs, you know, I have three daughters. I don't want, if somebody has a problem with me, I don't want my daughters to lose their, whatever little meager inheritance that I put together for them without an LLC. It's important to recognize that this is America. We fought a war with the British because we wanted to have our own company. Like, that's part of America, owning your own stuff, being sovereign, owning your property, and those, that's normal. And we should, especially poor black people in the community, we should start embracing the idea of ownership and creating business entities that remove the risk from the individuals. Most of us, we just own our houses. I mean, that's it. That's everybody in my family. They just own a house. It's just a few entrepreneurs own LLCs. And that's typically the first step to entrepreneurship is starting an LLC. And it's normal. There are a lot of properties. If you go on LandGrid, you'll find hundreds of properties owned by individuals in LLCs to protect themselves, to protect their privacy, and also to protect this little meager asset. So the balance there that I would suggest, and we can't be prejudiced against people because they decide to put their property in an LLC. I completely agree with the point that if you're not from here and you're not even going to get on the Zoom call, we are pressed to try and give you a piece of property. But legally, we don't have anything to stand in the way of those peoples if they follow the ordinances. So we don't, there's nothing that prohibits us from giving it. We can just decide not to. And if that person decided that they had an issue with us, then we'd have to adjudicate that in court. But you guys are protected because we have the right to vote anything up or down per our choosing. So that's the benefit of the citizens. We are actually a buffer. The five of us can take a vote, and they will have to take it up with city council. And they can't say to an individual citizen who says, I don't want to sell to an LLC. It doesn't hold the population responsible. It holds us responsible as a governing body for the city. I want to just share one last thing before we go. Y'all had no problem, no problem at all sitting here. And this is a benefit for, here we go. In August of this month, the National Urban Farming Conference will come to Huntington Place for August 4th, 5th, and 6th. This is an article in a magazine in Texas talking about the city of Detroit as an urban farming Mecca, had a conversation with Councilpro Tim James Tate in the city of Detroit. They're working on ordinances that will affect the way that urban farming is handled in Southeastern Michigan. Animal husbandry, these are things that we had talked about before, people in Highland Park wanting to have chickens or small livestock like rabbits. This is a big deal, ladies and gentlemen. Whether you know it or not, they call Detroit the urban farming Mecca for the United States of America. And urban farming policy will actually be set by things that occur here in the city of Detroit. So if you're not participating, maybe you should. And I'll leave you with this, one question. Where does your food come from? Not trucks. So get in and grow some. Ladies and gentlemen, I have concluded all business at the city of Highland Park. The chair will declare this meeting adjourned.